Okay, at 7 o'clock, I'm gonna call the Henderson City Council meeting to order. The mayor is on his way. So we're gonna get started, he'll be joining us in a couple minutes. So we will approve the minutes from the April 19th meeting?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passed. Request to appear before the council, we have the Henderson Sarcot Committee first. Hope you guys will come forward.
Yes, thank you. We just have information on this year's celebration, what we're planning to cover. So, no major achievements, we're excited to bring records that I had lying on the yard a couple years ago, so they're gonna come back and play on Friday night. And shirts and skins is a thing we've been trying to get for a couple years, we're excited to have that. A couple things to color that we need to approve. One is, we're planning to host Lions League again on Saturday, so because that is an offsite location, we're looking for approval from the city to allow us to host charitable gambling at Thunder Park, similar to what we did last year. And then, everything else is pretty much the same, more slightly modified. We're planning to do a V.P. on a kid parade at 10:00 a.m. versus, I think prior years, this was four last year, we did it in the afternoon. We just found that during the afternoon it was way around kids naptime, so we either had five kids or ones that were sleeping, so we think that better turn out at 10:00 a.m. We, I told Erica about some of the road closures for that whole impact for the whole weekend, and then we're working through the parade route closures. But those will be similar.
So you're closing Third Street?
Yeah, is that the one that's in front of your country school?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Third Street is the only one. Last year we had mini rides, and this year we're not going to have that, so we don't need...
Well, there will be, and then the one by the ball field, too, just that block. Is that Mill, I believe it's Mill?
The market.
Our market.
Market.
So there'll be, yeah, Third and then the market, one blocks.
But not the one over that way, mini rides, huh?
Yeah, that'll be over.
Is that the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Got more?
The only other two things is that, and I don't know if we officially need approval, but we've applied for liquor licenses for the Lions Shelter and Sarcot Days, so Eric was taking on the paperwork for that today. Other than that, we should be all set.
Yeah, let them know it's in the packet.
Yeah, so the packets are the two liquor license applications for Henderson Sarcot Days and Henderson Lions Club. There's the offsite gambling application, and the City of Henderson endorsement of the Henderson Sarcot Days Parade at the end there.
You don't necessarily need approval of the licenses, but it comes from the state. The last few years, you waived the fees, so you have to decide whether you want to charge the fee for what they're doing, and you also need to approve that thing always.
I'll make a motion to waive the fees on the Lions Club and the Sarcot Days for their liquor license, and to approve the offsite gambling for the Lions Club, and approve their parade route in the street.
Second.
No, you take over. Can I vote on that, or do I need to abstain since I'm on the committee?
You can go ahead.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, so you defy by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion being carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Refuse and recycle contract.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Matt Herman, Public Services, and this is Deb Gotts. We are here tonight to talk a little bit about trash recycling contract. The contract we have in place currently expires on July 31, 23. That contract has sort of an automatic renewal built into it, and in looking at the economic of the contract, we sent a letter to Juan detailing that at the current rates, we could continue doing it.
I think you got it in the packet, right?
We very much want to continue being a partner with the city. I think the economic situation that our industry's been in for five or 10 years has not had an impact on your rates, which I think is probably a good thing for the past. We were talking a little bit before the meeting, been a really unprecedented handful of years for the waste and recycling industry, going back to 2018, 2019, when we stopped being able to sell recyclables overseas in an effort most referred to commonly as the China Sword. They stopped the import of recyclables. Not that we in the Midwest were sending recyclables overseas, but all of the coasts worked, and all of that material sort of flooded in, and we have seen record low prices for some commodities all across the country, and specifically in the Midwest. It doesn't change the fact that recycling is the right thing to do, it conserves resources, it keeps waste out of landfills, it does a lot of good things, it just costs more than it used to, because the value, the value that we saw in that basket of goods eight, 10 years ago just isn't there anymore. So that's one pretty persistent and negative impact on the recycling side of the industry that really we don't see changing in the foreseeable future. We saw some commodities through COVID, some of the paper products went up quite a bit, all that toilet paper that everybody kept in their basement had to come from somewhere, so we did see some relief there, that's kind of faltered. Some of the core metals and plastics have value currently in the Twin Cities right now. We lost Rockten, which is a large cardboard recycler in St. Paul, that was taking a huge amount of material, that's putting pressure on cardboard, which for many years has been kind of one of the good ones materials that had more value. Again, everything is still getting recycled, it just costs more than it used to. So when we hear a lot of reports in the media about nothing gets recycled, that isn't the case. Our MRFs, our recycling facilities are heavily regulated by the state, 85% of what we bring in has to go out the door as a sold material. So that hasn't changed, the economics of it have changed significantly. On the overall, probably largest driver on cost in our industry is labor. We are still in the middle, or hopefully the middle end, of a pretty epic labor shortage as it relates to commercial drivers. We have, I can remember signing contracts when we had drivers with $15, $17, $18 an hour, and now we're up in the 20s and 30s. So it's just been a very persistent cost increase on the industry that we don't see changing anytime soon. So all those things together, the letter that we presented simply states that we can't continue the contract at the existing rates, we would love to negotiate a contract, and in the letter, I think I put the range, it'd be somewhere between $6 and $8 more per month per resident, is what we think the costs would come up to. We have modeled, we have an offer, we can make you, I don't want to sound kind of vague and cagey, but generally when we're having this first conversation, I don't like to go on record and say it's $7.72, because then the next guy can come in and say, well, how about 7.70? So, we want to negotiate with you, I think we can put a very, very fair package together, and that would be our desire, and I think, you know, we talk about $6 to $8 more per month per resident, I think it would hopefully be on the low end of that, but we'd probably be looking at, you know, trash moving up $5 or $6, recycling getting up to about $6, above $4.50 where it is, and these are rates that I think we see across the market, prices heading in that direction. So we are here to answer questions, to help explain that, the letter, and the current situation in any way we can, and would, again, look very forward to getting a formal proposal and a revision and extension of the contract.
So we have a really high recycling rate. Is that beneficial for us, or is that harming us with the fact that recycling isn't being bought?
No, it's still, it's still, so let's just imagine an imaginary house, and it has 100 pounds of stuff. If 50% of it is in the trash and 50% is in the recycling, the trash still costs $60, $70 a ton to throw away. The material in the recycling bin used to be cash in the check, right, it used to be worth a lot. Just because that whole basket might only be worth 20 bucks a ton now, it's still not paying 70 bucks a ton to get rid of it. So, you know, you move things around between the two, it's still better to market the material. And again, we're getting that material to market, it's just not at the rates that historically we've seen, really where these programs were built. The paper is, the paper was a big component, it doesn't have the value that it used to. Plastics are changing, but it's still, recycling is still the right thing to do, and I don't think in any way residents are punished for it. It's still a cheaper option, just not as cheap as it used to be. I hear no complaints from residents.
No.
And that's a big motivator for me.
I really, and I really like the monthly reports that we get sent, as far as what the complaints were and how they were addressed. I think that's really, you know, if I hear any complaints, you guys used to put out a little calendar with recycling weeks and garbage weeks, and people, I've heard people miss that, not necessarily a complaint.
Sure. And do you see the value of the actual paper one, or just have it available on your website?
I think so, because, you know, most of it is from elderly people who really aren't on, don't seem to be on the computer or on the internet.
Sure, so it's paper, on the elderly.
Yeah, and I think it used to come like in January or December or something?
Probably late December, yeah, that's probably the smartest, start from the first one. Sometimes if you don't remember, you watch your neighbors to see if anybody puts their recycling out, and then you know to do yours.
Yeah.
And if the first person's wrong, everything's wrong.
Yeah.
And in a lot of communities, we've gotten away from the paper because different demographics in different communities, they get thrown out, and they're not as valuable.
It would be fine on the website, too, but I agree with you, the elderly people probably need a paper one.
And is there, do you have another mailing that might target that community? A senior newsletter or anything that we could get that?
Not really, no. You know, but it might work just to have them like in the banks, or in the post office.
Or, yeah, put it on the bulletin board here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, just a little notebook that they could take one.
Yeah.
That's easy for us to print a hundred and set up a few spots, that's pretty simple.
And then we can also put it on the Henderson website if you want to send a link. So do we need a motion to approve the $6 to $8 increase?
Oh, yeah.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Both, motion made and carried.
And it was just worth with our city staff and...
Yeah, we'll work it up in a minute, and if I'm in, I'll shoot you another letter with support.
Keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, good evening.
Henderson Library, no one here?
Did you have a report meeting?
Not me specifically, I know they're working on, getting their standard procedures set.
You got a meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
We did have one more question about exactly why the library board is taking over running the library rather than the city running the library, and the city charging us to be our fiscal agent, came up for discussion. So I'd really like to have a clarification on that for tomorrow night. You can bring that with you, if you're coming with the officer.
Or, what do you mean, ignore?
We're just a little confused.
It's pretty much statute, though, right? The state has statute, why is it says that you have to have a library board that governs a municipal library, especially if it's part of a regional system, so the majority of that actually comes from state statute.
Well, I knew that part, but I guess it's paying the city to be our fiscal agent?
If the library board doesn't want the city to be involved, it doesn't have to be.
We don't have to, you would have to pay somebody to do it yourself.
Yeah, that's fine.
It would be pretty costly for the library to hire and call them to...
No, no.
Yeah, to involve that separately.
So I guess I'm still, what's the question?
I think that answered her questions. Yes, you did. I guess the Markham part was a question as well, but thanks, I did it. Thank you.
All right, city attorney and ordinances. Oh, all right, let's talk junk. All right, just give you a little update on a couple of nuisance properties that Erica sent to me for some prosecution. First and foremost, the Schaefer property, that's 307 South Fourth Street, it's my understanding the vehicle is still there, correct if I'm wrong, Erica?
Yeah.
Oh, we have a court appearance on June 8th to address that, that'll be the first appearance, that's basically where Schaefer is advised, with a charge against him, his right to an attorney, and then from there it kind of proceeds forward. So June 8th court appearance is really what they call the first appearance, it's basically to wind up before the pitch. There will be some additional hearings after June 8th, but that is in the process. Then we had another nuisance property that we're dealing with, that was the Johns property, those are in the system, our court date on that is June 15th, and again, very similar situation, that's a first appearance, June 15th on that particular property. Markham and Saber, I did send out a letter to them, asking them to start a cleanup, I included some pictures, and then somebody sent me, and that letter went out April 27th. So if that one is not cleaned up, then we'll get that one charged out as well. So those are the nuisance properties that Erica sent me and that I have been working on, so we'll let the judicial system deal with those at this point in time. Does anybody have any questions on any of those?
Well, originally we had 13 properties, and a few of these I haven't been on this list yet that need to be. I don't know what it takes to get it done, but if I gotta go around and take pictures myself, I guess that's what it's gonna have to be, but...
The ones that I am dealing with, Schaefer, Johns, and Markham, those are the ones I've got. So those three are charged out, they're in the justice system, and like I say, from there, the judge will deal with it, they'll either clean it up or something else will happen. Anybody else have any questions on those three? All right. I did have a discussion with Juan about basically basing up our nuisance property code. Our code is fairly archaic, there is quite a bit of wiggle room in the nuisance property provisions. What I've sent Juan, and what you guys should have before you're here tonight, is basically ordinance 238. This is an ordinance that addresses motor vehicles. I have underlined things that I have kind of suggested that you guys may be considering. Tonight's just the first reading, we'll have a public hearing either next month or the month after, it'll give you guys plenty of time to think how you want to have this worded. But I essentially have added some language that's underlying. Take a look at it, let me know what you guys think, I don't know how in-depth you want to go, but when you're talking about motor vehicles here in Henderson, they really aren't that regulated. It's kind of a gray area here in town, and so if you're looking at regulating motor vehicles, junk motor vehicles, inoperable motor vehicles, we really do need to add some additional language to make sure that we capture those. And just specifically, as it regards to ordinance 238, which you guys are looking at right now, for instance, at section 5, I've proposed language that motor vehicles must be operable and in good working order when parked out or stored on residential property. That really doesn't appear in your code, it would if you would pass an amended, this amended ordinance. So then we've got greater clarity, any inoperable motor vehicles, they fall within regulation. Many cities have language similar to what I've proposed in section 4, that vehicles have to be parked on gravel, asphalt, or concrete, they can't be parked on grass, lawn, or dirt area. Again, your code doesn't have that kind of language. So if you have motor vehicles parked on the grass, there is some wiggle room there. My language in number 4 would clear that up, make it much easier for Erica to cite, make it much easier for a judge, more importantly, to enforce.
Okay, and I have a little concern with that?
Yes.
So when we have snow emergency and people have to move their vehicles off the street, people are gonna come and be like, well, where do I park?
Where do they go?
Because if they have to park them on their yard, I mean, either way, they're gonna get something from the city, so I feel like we need to have exceptions or some other language?
It's a very good concern. Janesville had that very same question a couple months ago, and what we did is we did a carve-out that that provision wouldn't apply during snow emergencies.
Okay.
Jason, could we even add that for not more than like 72 hours or something like that?
And then I have a concern with number nine, for the five vehicles, because I have five drivers in my home, so we have more than five vehicles at our property, but my kids are home in the summer anyway.
Again, these are just suggestions, you know, some cities, they really go crazy with it, that's a little crazy, you guys may not even want to consider putting a cap. Well, maybe the issue isn't so much the volume, or I don't know, maybe it isn't, maybe it is, maybe it is a volume. I think as long as the vehicles are parked on an impervious surface, and as long as they're operable, and as long as they're registered, I mean, that's really what you're going at.
Right, we don't want to see them sit there for three years, something way into mind.
Yes.
That's what I might...
Yes, but then on the other hand, you don't want to have 10 motor vehicles there either. So...
I don't want to, I don't want a residence like on the extreme south end of Fourth Street, where they circle the whole house.
Well, they've only got one car circling right now, which shouldn't be there. I think we had made some progress there that has slipped in the last couple of weeks, but that's, we shouldn't even talk about individuals right now. You know, one thing that we could do is we could put the X name on 9 through 14, basically, you know, not even consider those, and maybe looking, maybe look at doing like 1 through 8, see how that goes, and a year from now, if we're still having problems with motor vehicles, then maybe take a look at doing something like that. I don't know, you've got some larger lots in town, then again, you've got some smaller lots in town, and you've got people who have kids, and you've got, you know, every kid now has got a vehicle, you know, husband and wife, they got a vehicle, sometimes two or three vehicles, and then you throw in a boat, you throw in a camper, and you throw in ATV, and all of a sudden you're way in excess of that five number. But again, you know, I don't know what you guys are after, if you're after volume, or if you're more after where they're parked, and whether they're operable.
I would say the latter.
Yeah. I'm just throwing that out as an option, again, numbers 9 through 14, you can think about it, you don't have to do it, and maybe what we do is we just focus like on 1 through 8 with a carve-out for snow emergency, it wouldn't apply, and 72-hour restriction. If you're within 72 hours, you're fine, if you're outside of 72 hours, you're not fine. Number 6, again, that just basically goes to capture junk vehicles, some additional language, just makes it very, very clear to a judge and the residents and the PD for them to enforce it. I've got a carve-out at section 7, any motor vehicles being worked on, you know, if somebody's got a flat tire, whatever, if somebody's changing their transmission, again, whatever, they got 72 hours, if you guys want to play with that 72-hour number, feel free. If somebody's got a transmission or an engine issue, you know, it's probably gonna be in a garage or a shed or something, you know, I basically put 72 hours because several of my other cities do that.
See, I really don't have an issue with that either, it's just people making solvency here, is what I mean.
Yes. And so that would be captured largely by number 6, it covers junk vehicles, inoperable vehicles, disused, something that isn't being driven.
Yeah, I like 6, I don't like 7.
You want me to take 7 out?
Yeah.
Or just change it to like a week?
I don't know, I mean, if somebody's working on a vehicle, they're working on a vehicle, and I know it takes me forever to...
Now, if they're waiting for parts, sometimes parts are hard to get.
Hell, I was working on a tractor, and I've been working on it for two weeks.
I think, I think 5 and 6 cover us.
So you're gonna add a language?
Not, but go 6 and then 8?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, yeah.
So you're gonna add a language to, uh, 4?
Correct.
You're gonna take out 7, 9 through 15 are gonna be gone, or 9 through 14 will be gone, and 15 and 16 will just move up in numbers, whatever numbers they turn out to be?
Correct.
So if that's where you're at, somebody should move to have, if you want that at the first reading, then you can draw out whatever and bring the rest of that back to the second meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll move to accept the first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, so we say aye. Okay, I want to go back here just a little bit on this proposed ordinance. I don't know if this goes to pressure, that can surprise me, right now, your current ordinance says all, the speed limit in town is 10 miles an hour, is it 30 here in town?
I think it's 30.
I thought it was 30.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so I'm gonna change that.
Oh, has it been?
Except for the alley.
Really?
I don't know that there's a difference.
There is a difference.
Yeah, I guess I put it mildly. I thought it was 30.
Yeah, and then also on 4, make sure you add the snow...
58 years as a Scott law. That's, I mean, that's what it says, 10...
Yeah, I was gonna question that, too.
All right, with that said, we got that one taken care of. I gotta throw the other one on the phone. Ordinance 239, again, this is going after the public nuisance, again, just suggestions here, do with them what you want. I took a look at the entire thing, and I noticed that you guys didn't have a whole lot as it regards hazard trees, hazard branches. I threw some language in there, you know, maybe give me some feedback on it. Basically, what it says is that if you have a hazard tree or a hazard branch, it's about to fall on somebody's fence or somebody's house, it probably should be dealt with as a public nuisance. I have had situations where trees and branches have fallen down on people's houses, and damaged sheds, and fences, and whatnot. You guys, there's a lot of wiggle room in there, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have it in there.
Well, then you have to enforce it, and if you turn it into insurance, they tell you it's an act of God, I don't want to argue with God on this.
It does give us the ability to send the property owner a letter and say, hey, clean it up. Yeah. So something to think about between now and the next one, the next meeting. And then more importantly, at letter N, I've got language in here going after junk. This language probably should be in there without it, there's a lot of wiggle room in your nuisance ordinance. It goes after junk, disused... It goes after junk, disused property, tin, lumber, should be lumber, wire, garbage, containers, bins, brush, branches, trees, rims, parts of motor vehicles, motor vehicles in violation of any part of the city code, and building materials that have been sitting for longer than thirty days. Somebody's building, somebody has a permit, you know, we'll look past that. Also goes after disused furniture, junk furniture, and any other items that are essentially junk.
Appliances?
Appliances, yes. Yeah, appliances would fall under either junk or disused property.
Okay.
And then?
So if they want to introduce this one, what they're introducing is adding something to C and to I, basically replacing N and replacing T?
Correct. Yeah, section I, essentially what I did is you can't throw wastewater, snow, ice, that sort of stuff on your neighbor's property. I don't think it's a problem, Henderson, but if we're going to be cleaning this up, we probably should do a good thorough cleanup, because it does come up in cities from time to time, and somebody's throwing a bunch of snow on the neighbor's property, throwing ice. They've diverted their gutters to the neighbor, I've seen that.
But that, when it goes to their neighbor, is that, is that handled? Because that's typically a civil issue.
We could, we could keep it that way.
I, I'd rather stay out of drainage issues that, you know, pertain, sure, neighbor to neighbor.
Sure, sure.
Because they can get hair again, because there is no fix that we can come up with.
Yep. Turn the snow blower shoot the other way, I don't know.
So you're saying, just reading it, if and when it's introduced, the order on to adjacent property isn't in there?
Yes. I'll take that out, if you guys want to.
I don't see it, it's never really, hasn't really been a problem here.
Not vital?
Not snow, but rainwater, we have...
Yeah, most of the time, if you would ask your neighbor not to do it, they stop.
So if we're going to introduce this, we need a motion?
Yeah. To accept, this is your first reading?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number two thirty-nine as their first reading.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
And then we need a motion to set both for a public hearing, next meeting, such and such time. When do you guys typically do those law?
We'll just do it at the beginning of the meeting, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
I'll make a motion to do the public hearing at the next meeting.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Here we go.
Were we moving a little fast?
This is first official, uh...
It's time for minutes.
You might even make one.
They're recording.
Who's that trying?
We have to go back. All right, and then finally, I submitted a letter of recommendation, resignation to Lawn a few days ago. Was basically in Moore County with my wife for a couple of weeks. My wife and I talked it over, spent a little busy, a little hectic, nothing against anybody, I've enjoyed working here, but I did put in my letter of resignation, I'll give you plenty of time to find a replacement, it'll take effect by the end of June. So your next step would be to go out for RFPs, do some resume review, and if you choose to do interviews, you can certainly do interviews. Some cities would do those, others wouldn't, it just kind of depends on how many you get and who you know. I have put some feelers out to a couple of colleagues in the area as well, so we'll see if we can get you in, in good shape.
Question, are you resigning elsewhere, as the city attorney?
No.
Just us?
You just don't like us?
No, no, it's not that at all. It's a bit of a drive, from Lee Center to Gaylord, and, you know, I did some financial crunching on it, and I'm basically getting about thirty-three cents on the dollar after expenses are taken into consideration. So in reality, I'm getting somewhere around three hundred to three hundred and fifty a month for it, and frankly, it's just, it's just not worth it. And plus, I'd like to have an extra afternoon, you know, with the wife on the boat. We live in North Waterville, South Kill County, on Sunfish Lake. Plus, I've been doing this for twenty-one, twenty-two years, so. Has nothing to do with anybody, has nothing to do with the town, you've got a great town, you're headed in a good direction, so. Has nothing to do with any of that, it's just purely economical and free up a little time.
All right, well, thank you for serving our community, we appreciate it, helping the council.
You bet.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
We don't want you to go, but we understand.
I appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
All right.
Say hi to your wife.
We'll do it.
Take a shortcut tonight.
I came all the way through Green Isle in Arlington.
Oh, nice.
It was nice.
There's a shortcut in Pocky's.
I know, I've heard about that. All right, you guys take care.
Was that on the tractor you were working on, or did you...
What's that?
Was that on the tractor you were working on?
No, no, no. You guys take care.
Is this your request, sir?
Yeah, it is.
Can't leave without that.
Oh, what do you want to do about that?
I think we should put out a request for...
He is teasing?
Yeah.
And is he giving us the names of a couple colleagues in contact, or?
But I guess it's a matter of whether you want to do our, whether you want to do those, or whether you just want to take a couple and negotiate. I mean, when we hired him, we didn't, when we basically had a couple recommendations and...
True, Allison just recommended Jason.
She did.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
Yeah, Ken Jansen, I reached out to him, he's out of Glencoe, he's the city attorney for, I believe, Gaylord Garland, and he has, he has expressed some interest, I haven't heard back on the final one.
Well, he's on the right side of the...
I was just going to say, he's on the right side of the river.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so. Kim would get out of the sir, I reached out to her, but Ken Jansen would be a very strong, good, good choice.
Okay.
I wouldn't hesitate with him at all.
Well, let's start going.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just send out, just, just send out information to both of those people and see if they're, see if they're interested.
I think so.
Okay. Let's do that first.
Perfect.
Why don't I send them both another email tomorrow on top of you on it, on, and that will put you guys in touch?
Okay, that's good. And you don't have to do anything, we're just negotiating with a couple different, other professional agencies.
Yes. Yeah, you don't have to get bids or anything like that.
Okay.
You can still do that if you don't, if either they don't want to do it, or...
Correct.
Or whatever.
Correct.
So I would recommend that if they both say no, that you, we just proceed with RFPs.
Yeah, if we're going to get information, we're going to know shortly whether one or both of them are interested.
Correct.
So then, if in a week or so we figure out either of those two are interested, then we'll just throw up, so you, so you got something for the next meeting to do something.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Where are we at?
E.
D?
E.
E? E? There is no E.
Oh, I forgot the D.
I'm sorry, I was looking down here. First of an old man is just walking down here. Disaster declaration. We have a resolution by the city council to declare a period of local emergency, and this is for this flood event. Local emergency is recognized as beginning May eleventh, and will continue until flood waters recede and have to open Henderson River flood levy stop log closures on highways nineteen ninety-three. The declaration of a local emergency will invoke the city's disaster plan, the portions that are necessary for the response and recovery from the emergency, as well as the provisions of Minnesota statute twelve point twenty-nine and twelve point thirty-seven. Any argument about, against that? I would make it a motion.
All right.
No, you make a motion, there. Motion made, second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made second, motion made carried.
And Tom is gone now, our emergency manager into Canada, so I'm fired to work with Lawn as far as when to take the closures down.
Okay.
And hopefully that's so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully the rain again. All right, so now, we jump to A, police chief's monthly report.
May, May two thousand twenty-three Henderson Police Report. Eighteen callouts, one traffic citation, twenty-eight traffic warnings, two animal complaints, three agency assists, twenty-nine public assists, ninety-two public contacts, and one arrest. And our schedule has changed, that I work Sunday through Wednesday, and Jake is working Thursday through Saturday, and the squad's going to need tires by November, they're getting a little bit down slow.
So I've had a couple complaints that on the weekends in the evenings were stopping people for not signaling when they make a turn.
I don't think so, but maybe that was Carl, possibly.
Uh, that was within the last two weeks.
Last two weeks?
Yep.
Okay, I'll check with, I'll check with Jake and...
And there's a lot of people who don't turn on their signal, so if we're going to enforce that, it's twenty-four hours a day, not just in the evening when we're fishing for dogs.
Yeah.
So do we get a bed for tires, or...
They're just there on state, they're coming on state, too. You know, weren't those, weren't those tires on there?
Yeah. Yeah, here it is.
Oh, you got it, yeah.
So here, you just have to put them...
Oh, they're here already.
Yeah, and they're on, they're there for the night.
Oh, oh, I didn't get that, sorry.
They're key ordered right away, he said, because it's just a bid, he said, you just have them on hand for when it comes time to throw them on, so.
But, yeah, when you need it by November, they can have it now, right?
What's that?
They can have it right now, if you order it right here.
Yeah.
But they're going to wait till November or whatever, so they're fresh for winter.
He said, they're like four thirty seconds right now, so if you're down to two thirty seconds, so. So if they get done before that, then we throw them on anyway, so.
All right. Assistant administrator, car sale, who is the lucky recipient?
Two bids, the lucky recipient was Braden Neeson for one thousand five hundred and five out of Niklet, Minnesota.
What?
One thousand five hundred and five.
Did you pack it?
I know.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made, and seconded, to honor the high bid for the police car. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Quick. Opposed?
Yep, yep.
Oh, wow.
Just a couple notes on the tree grant, I'm still talking with DNR, they've advised we should just update the application a bit, and resubmit that, I should know more July each.
What is it they need updated, whatever?
Uh, just to be more in line with the dollar values they're looking at, so update the application and the budget portion of it.
All right, anything else?
Uh, the next one is the Laura Hacker, the county assessor, sent along this local board of appeal and equalization meeting policy and procedures after the last board. She said it's basically amended, it's suggested language, multiple for next year. I kind of just highlighted the areas that were changes made by me, and then there's some times in the back that are, that you can change as well. The language is pretty open. You can change what you like.
Some of it, though, Tim, we don't even do, like, we don't schedule the appointments, they do.
They have to have, they have to have a policy, so they, they, they work for us, you know, you pay them whatever we pay them, so they are, they are contract employees for this particular thing, so that's their, that's their policy, they follow.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion made seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made, carried. City administrator, activity report.
Not too much, sales tax haven't hurt much lately, flood control projects haven't hurt much lately, I guess hopefully the next week, it's going to adjourn this week, or the session adjourn this week, so hopefully we hear something. Tomorrow, the court just happened to have their annual inspection preliminary scheduled, or not preliminary, but scheduled for this week, so they're actually going to be here tomorrow and be looking at, that's not often, they actually see a project in operation, so that'll be, that'll be interesting, but again, it's a non-graded one, so the new procedure is they do two years of non-graded ones with suggestions and whatever, and next week they'll come out and do actually a graded one. The blacktop stuff, I think, we're done with, at least up to doing one with me, the project that we're going to do. Allison Clark, get nothing on, nothing, nothing on that that we've heard, well, there ain't nothing to do, thought and things, Tim will start working on that. And the baseball facility, the final class are getting formalized, right now they're actively telling, so hopefully they'll get those to Jason next week, and you can do the, the deeds, and been working or talking with, with Chris from SEH on the water project and what they all plan on doing, and he's got preliminary flows and stuff done, I think he sent, he sent letters out this week or two days ago, so he's looking at doing a workshop the thirty-first of May, when all their survey work and elevations and all that should be done, so I don't know what, whatever time that works for anybody.
Thanks for me.
Six, seven, four, five, I don't care.
Six, six-thirty, five o'clock, whatever you guys want, I don't know how long does he think it's going to take?
Well, it's how long you get, if you don't want to take it, I mean, you're going to have to go through, but you have to go through detail on the project, I mean, this is, this has got to work fairly smooth, so that, right, I mean, right now, the overall ninety-three project, the flood control project, is still scheduled a bit on December first, and they would want to start sometime in spring of two thousand and twenty-four, so basically Ridge Road would be closed spring of two thousand and twenty-four, so for the water project, we're going to need Ridge Road open to, and to get out and about and around, so we've got to get the bulk of everything, all the underground stuff done, early this year, and black, blacktop way early in two thousand and twenty-four, so, uh, we're, we'll have to, you know, right now, he's still kind of wishy-washy on what's all going to happen, and we need, basically need to nail that down and not have, so that we don't have any other additional meetings or whatever until the bids are out there and going, so. any other additional meetings or whatever until the bids are out there and going, so.
Yeah, we can't. We've gotta be.
Because, because you have to, on that project, and that's fine if for some reason something comes up and you don't wanna do it and you won't, you're not gonna do it then until two thousand and twenty-six or twenty-seven. Because, I mean, you got no idea, one, when for sure the ninety-three project would start and you surely don't have any idea when it's gonna get done.
That's.
Problem is that street is in such top shape that, I mean.
Yeah, that's right. So whatever's there, you gotta, you have to decide on, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do it and, and I, utilities, how far you wanna go. I think right now we're doing, right now he's got on his plans to Ninth Street, which is fine. But I still, I get the impression you guys still want Blacktop South Street no matter what, whether there's utility replacement there or not. And so that, so you have, you have Blacktop basically from, from Alton Park to in front of Trimbles and then tie in the utility project as it goes from Ninth, off Ninth Street to Main Street and, and ties it back into Sixth Street and then whatever we're doing on North End though. Uh, and just kind of aside about that, we did have Empire out here pretty much during, during the last high water, when it was high the last time. And there's some leaks out there that they found, but we also were able to then look at some stuff on North Sixth Street, so we got a better idea of what we need to get fixed on North, North Sixth Street too. So there's, there's some issues that are there as well with those guys.
So we've got, those trimbles and hotels there, they're kinda watching that. Just the cell phone, just going all the time there, where's that water going?
It's not running anymore.
Oh, I mean, is it going?
Well, if the water table's coming up slow.
It's always been in the day.
I don't know either. Last was just recirculating this water.
That's, that's, there was some thought that he was.
You know, that's not unusual.
He had like three pumps going.
And if you see water in the, in the sub basket, even on a new house after new construction, it doesn't necessarily mean that it'd ever get any higher. So people were.
Right.
See, when we first, when we first, the ponding area across down there, that's kind of level now where the Honeyberg Gardens at, that was a dock pond when we first started and so we piled that, we put a ditch in there to tile that to the ditch and it never, it never got any lower, you know, so then eventually we didn't do it and it just got to whatever level it got to and that was it, so.
But I think less was kind of recirculating his water.
Well, yeah, yeah.
He liked doing that, that's.
I thought, you know, if you look in that creek, there's an outlet.
Yeah. He, he had, he had an outlet that piped in there, but I don't, you're saying it's not running?
I haven't seen, noticed that.
It, it's underneath the street and comes out into the creek.
Right.
But I don't know why.
I think that was at Dark at Night, one of those, one of those deals.
You know, why it went down something like that, yeah.
Well, I guess it was dark.
I don't know if it was Dark at Night, it must've had some kind of whole game.
No, he was, he could be. You could, you're supposed to take your starch or into, you had to put a tech valve in and you had to do whatever because you didn't want, you didn't wanna put a shop in there and then they'll see your feet cut, right? Back up.
You just don't want to down the center.
Right.
He wasn't, he wasn't. But it's, what can you wanna meet?
Well, I think we need to understand that the road, the sewer and road project, sewer water road project really well in order to commit to do it because of the imminent, relatively imminent state project on ninety-three. We gotta be confident we can get it done, otherwise we're gonna have an absolute fiasco.
But, but I, I do think though, your plan all along though, if there, if there was the utility work done on South Street, your plan was to have that, that was, that was gonna be new Blacktop, is that right?
Yeah.
So, so if that's gonna be new Blacktop, then to me, we gotta, whatever plan they had for the trail and all that, we gotta, we gotta include all, we gotta make sure that's all included in there. And I know there's some discussion on that whole Ninth Street and South Street and the sliding hill and the hilltop dropping, whatever, doing something in that area. So if there's other people that you think need, need to, that are gonna wanna provide input on what's gonna happen in that area, you should make sure that they're, that they're here, you know, so that you can kind of track out what you're doing.
All in all, it's really, it's not that big a problem.
No, it's, it's something, once you get started, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, but it's just a matter of, you don't wanna, you don't wanna get stuck with, now all of a sudden you gotta go in and now everybody's gotta go out. The only way to get in town is going home.
Correct.
Going out.
So we just need to decide what time we're gonna meet.
Right, that's all we're doing now, yeah. Don't care.
Make sure Chris has his plans, final.
No, the plans, he's not gonna do the final plans until he runs that, those drafts by here.
I guess whatever works, you guys work something out here.
Same here.
Was it seven or six, six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Okay.
They have our regular meeting or?
No, thirty.
No, thirty.
First talking.
Cause then by, what you're gonna wanna do on the thirty-first is pretty much get him enough plans and approvals so that by the meeting, or for sure by the July meeting, he can approve the final plans and get, and get the bits. Jake?
All right.
We're done? You got that personnel report?
All right, I'll go through it. Bruce Gustus, back to regular hours and duties with some permanent restrictions that should not affect his duties. James Prager will continue his regular part-time duties, report on infiltration study. Tasha Anderson.
If somebody wants to see that, I got the video and I got the book report or whatever thing that you're interested in that, so we'll see it here. So basically they went through the stuff that they did on the old, on the new project and then they added Sixth Street and a few other blocks, so.
And anything we see there, we'll probably see a little bit worse by this time, so.
And, well, but now with that, like, Chris is supposed to be checking with G M. The corner of Fourth and Minnesota, there's, something is messed up there to where, and this was on, on, they had a service that went through there and somehow that settled or, or did something. So our flows were at the hundred and forties to a hundred and sixties for a few days and, and most of it all were pretty sure came, came right in there and they were, when they were going through that thing, it was, it was actually pretty good.
So to do that.
I know, they'll have to grow it.
Oh, they can.
They'll, they'll grow it, but it's just a matter of.
It's warranty or if it's.
Oh, yeah, pretty.
Pretty.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, I think it's under, I think, but it is, it's the old project's fault. I mean, it was part of that old project that, that, it's got a big leak there.
Just where they made the connection.
Where they, yeah, where they need to, where they need to get some kind of connection on there.
Okay, sorry. So going forward, Tasha Anderson Library staff transitioning to Anderson Board Employee with rest of staff. Tim Pouch recommend appointing to Clark Treasure effective May first, two thousand twenty-three and amend agreement through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And city administrator, January first, two thousand twenty-four, pay rates stay per the original agreement. Eric Carles, the Henderson Police Department, Carles remains seventy-five percent time. Jake Schneider continuing to work part-time, will accumulate enough salary to draw police P R, P E R A recommend authorizing him to be a contributing member, which he I think declined to do. Lon Berber continues as administrator through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three with audit assistance in January, two thousand twenty-four.
So you added on more time again?
So far.
Just through the end of the year so we can get through the audit.
Uh, what you do, you do have to do though, a, a motion on allowing part-time for, part of, allowing Snyder, Snyder to be a part-time.
The P E R A.
P E R A, part-time, because a special resolution has to be on for that.
I'll make that a motion to approve that resolution for Jake Schneider to get on the P E R A.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
And then you give a different complaint. Tim Clark Treasure effective May first.
We need that as a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would just like to see Tim start coming to like the flood meeting we had and stuff like that because in a year from now, if we have that event and Lon's not here, it's going to be Tim.
Yeah. And right now is the best time to get in on that kind of stuff.
What's that?
So who has the flood meeting? You have it with Lon or?
With Mindat, you know, city.
Tom calls.
Tom calls.
Okay.
For the Berbers to manage.
And for that, Tim should probably interact with the on-site.
On-site.
Tomorrow. You think that's gonna be about Tim?
Do whatever.
Whenever they show up.
Yeah, they just come in here and they talk and they say we're going out and doing, doing whatever. I mean, they usually don't do a lot of interaction. They just talk, do their thing. They usually come with boots and jump in the middle of the channels and do whatever, but I don't know, probably too high to do that now. So there, our levy is on some kind of, uh, international or national levy profile thing, so they come up with their, with all of their information and GPS, everything, all of them and all, all the reports that, since they've been doing that now for ten, fifteen years, they just go by all those and check elevations and do whatever, you know.
Is there really ever been any real change as far as settlement goes?
Oh, yeah. And we've, we've backed it through three times.
Okay. It's probably from the ground, huh?
I agree. Yeah, that's what it says.
No, they're gonna, John Anderson brought to my attention that creek back here, the core engineers are involved, were involved with that. And there's.
They do, they do inspection on that.
Can they do that? Can they do that when they're here?
They do, oh, they'll do whatever they say they're gonna do, you know, I'll see where they're at, but they, they want, they don't get money for that.
No, it should be.
If they, if they.
John thought it should get inspected because it's washing out underneath.
Wait, that's, that's part of, yeah, that's part of inspection, yeah. But they, they don't pay for it.
Well, I didn't, you know, like, they still have, in order to do anything, you still have to have their approval on it.
No, no, you're, you're, you're supposed to assume what, what you're, we got an operation manual and whatever, all, all those things are supposed to be done. So what they're coming out here for is to check and see if those things have all, all been done. And so then they, they put, this, but this year won't be a graded inspection. When they do their graded inspections, they either call something unacceptable, acceptable or minimal. And so the ones, the ones that they put U's on, which would be unacceptable, then those are, those are the ones that you have to, you gotta until the next year to get, to get those, to get those all done.
I never looked at it. I'm just, John said it was getting bad back then.
But yeah, I mean, well, Bruce and Biscuits did, did a bunch of work on it last year, but they did about eight, ten thousand dollars of concrete work and paint where the, where the, where the railing is buying charities and along there.
Yeah, they're, but I'm done, back here, but.
Yeah, it extends all the way up.
Sure.
Past, at about, well, behind it.
Yeah.
Where the W P A project.
Somewhere out there, the quarter, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a plank up there where you go.
But it's something we're.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah. All righty. All right, that's done. Bills.
Yeah, I do a motion to approve the cash balance. Four point, four thirty, two thousand, two point three.
I'll.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills. I would just like to see the police department start doing their own background checks rather than hiring out, because that's what most police departments do. Their own background checks. Pardon?
Their value.
Yeah. I mean, rather than paying five hundred dollars for someone else to do it.
All right. You made it a motion for the bills?
Yep.
I'll second it. Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. Old business.
Did you check your name on, Mindat, on signing Joe there for ninety-three and six across them?
We tried to have, start a conversation with them. They're distracted.
We did request the paint.
They are distracted.
Yeah.
But no, we'll get back on.
You mentioned the coal.
Yeah, I did mention the coal. We didn't, you know.
It'll be, I mean, I don't know if we brought this up the last time. Was it possible before we stopped there or what do you think? Would that cause more trouble or?
Well, I think it'd be, it might be advantageous to us, but I don't think they'll ever agree to it.
I don't think they would ever agree to it.
I mean, just stop signs themselves. I'm not talking about lights or.
No, I, I think they would be opposed to anything that altered the way traffic goes. But what do you mean?
Well, they will do a study whenever they, they grab the cat.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, they're working.
My, I believe.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll come up the plan. I mean, they're, they're, they're gonna totally change it all, so, or they're gonna work on it for that month or something.
And the design team does have a main street.
I don't know why it is in Istanbul when you pull out, I mean, you gotta get out there, a little ways to see if anybody's coming and I, you know, is it because everything drops off and they're looking uphill one way and down the other, is it?
Well, it's a lot easier.
No, it's because they moved the traffic from the center and they pushed it towards the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And ever since they did that, it's hard to see.
Yeah, it is.
So that one year when we were closed and we had signs there, we had to park further back, like our yellow area was extended, then it was easier to see. But then we have less parking on Main Street when you have more yellow space. But if it's easier to cross and it's safer, maybe it's worth it to extend the yellow.
I'm all in favor of extending the yellow if it's enforced. Otherwise, there's no sense in extending the yellow.
Right. Yeah, because the post office is always abused.
Yes, even in the evening when it's not open.
Well, yeah, that's the other, our, our, we got our four, four main, four main traffic generators are on that corner, you know, so.
But again, we have to probably talk to Mindat on that.
Man, just to track traffic along, going through it on a daily basis, it's gotta be, I'd be amazed if you did a column.
Well, I'm sure if you, you ask.
We have done that before.
Yeah, if you ask poll, polls, I agree, pretty, pretty likely second. And they do that quite a bit.
Yeah, and plus the fact that, you know, you've got different, different age levels trying to get out onto that intersection. Somebody hesitates and.
Is Mindat getting invited to our May thirty-first workshop or is that just with S E H?
Well, I think it could be Mindat.
Okay. So we're not talking about anything for the ninety-three project?
Oh.
Okay.
I don't know when, I don't know when, so, July maybe. Tim wanted. Tim wanted, Tim wanted to show in April, or the county wanted to show in April and in May, but, uh, he made zero, he made zero progress, so he wasn't.
Based on the money, or?
No, he, he was gonna, he was, he's ready to share the hundred percent plans, but.
He's waiting for the state.
Yeah, he's, you know, he's.
They gotta have, well, if the county isn't, the county itself isn't committed to that based on what it costs, was the millions that they probably already put into that project.
Can they still just proceed with County Road six and not do the additional two feet?
No, no.
So we have to wait on the state?
Well, they don't have to wait, they don't ever have to wait on the money. I mean, the county can spend whatever money it wants, it was just a matter of how soon it's gonna get it back, I mean.
Well, and they could spend county money on that project, it would just delay.
Others.
Other projects in the future.
But it's no different, we, they've got, they've got the fourteen million. I mean, just like, they're not, the money that we're paying, the three hundred and seventy or eighty that we're paying S E H to do our design, we don't have that money in the bank, it's just a matter of, uh, of, once you spend thirty, you pay the engineer, you put a thing together, and they give you whatever, whatever you pay the engineer, you know? It's the same, it'd be the same thing with the county, that if the county spends X amount of money, uh, they put a claim in, and they're gonna get it all back, it's just a matter of now, they, Tim figured it's gonna be more than the fourteen million, and, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna spend fourteen million between now and, uh, letting bid. I mean, they could, if they wanted to, but they're just, uh, r- risk adverse enough.
Fair, fair risk.
So they said, basically, they gotta, they gotta have twenty million dollars in the bank before.
That's exactly it.
Before they're gonna do it.
You know, talking about North Sixth Street, the intersection with Main, um, and those, um.
Fifth, North Fifth.
Or North Fifth, and the divot center in the road, you know? Um, and I'm just kind of going back to the potholes in Minnesota. And if you, your vehicle's damaged in a pothole and the state's aware of it, you actually sue the state. Um, should we let the county know that people have fallen and that we've had a motorcycle wipeout in those divots? Because now, I mean, we know.
Well, we've officially let them know, yeah, I, I don't see why not, I mean.
I would say Tim will be here one day, I mean, within the next two or three months. So I would, I would just tell him then with whatever he's got, see what kind of procedures he's got to do it.
I mean, they should do something with them.
That's just trucks calling you to a stop.
Oh, yeah, right. Um, I mean, you can't look forward when you walk across that intersection, you have to look down.
But I would make sure to remember that whenever he comes here. But, but getting, getting to do that.
Is there any reason why you have to wait two, three months?
Well, if you send him a letter now, I mean, that doesn't mean you're gonna do anything wrong.
Well, I could, if I take Randy's, Randy's points, put him on notice and.
Yeah, that's fine.
Take some liable, potential liability off us.
Tim, Tim can do a nice little letter, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd say the sooner the better.
Timmy, thank you.
Sure. It's getting bad, well, even what's happened down by the, by the fire station with that manhole cover. Because it's, now the water is running down the middle of the street because it's got a, a channel.
Sometimes there's a really big puddle there.
Yeah. All right.
Uh, really, at six thirty for May thirty first?
Okay, six thirty, and revised meeting schedule? Any particulars? I'll make that a motion. Second. Motion made and seconded, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made, carry. Is there anything anyone wants to add before I say the meeting is?
I, uh, I got one thing I wanna add.
You didn't make it.
On the, on the water bills, okay, we, when, they don't get paid, they get turned over to the tax.
Yeah.
Why are we letting, letting them go, are we not getting any interest or anything off that? We're, we're borrowing money at what, five and a quarter, so, you know? Why are we not shutting this water up?
I think, I think you had some of that.
That's all, they are actually doing it.
They are doing it, I was telling you.
Yep. What do you got, six out?
I can't see if I can run for half a year or even a year.
Only if you got anything like that anymore, but I shouldn't say there are some properties that are like that. There's, there's nobody, there's nobody living in, that eventually they're gonna have to go back to, but then, make a map.
We're paying interest, bar money, paying interest on that, you know, that stuff makes sense to me.
I guess one of the things.
Not good business.
One of the things I didn't know, and we just gave Tim, Chris and I did an okay to do some more shut offs, but even though they're shut off, they continue to get the monthly minimum bill.
Yeah, that's right.
I didn't, I just not know that.
You could say, plus they gotta, plus they gotta turn down the fee.
Yeah.
You know, to do whatever.
And then, uh, what about fire agents, so you're gonna, you know, when they're gonna flush those?
Did Jameis flush them?
I thought he said, uh, it was supposed to be this, was it in the paper? And I guess not.
Probably don't want it during flooding.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, you know, it probably not a good idea.
Yeah, I, somewhere I thought it was on the skip, but, but maybe that was, uh, I think maybe, I don't know, I haven't seen anything. It was supposed to be the second or third week in, in May, relatively, but, uh, at least that's what they said when they were doing those fire testing, but if he didn't put it in, they haven't done.
Check with them, and if he wants us, the fire to do them, we can do them, but we just need a couple weeks heads up.
All right, we're currently in violation, you all, meeting on?
I'm gonna go home.
We're gonna adjourn yet?
I adjourned the meeting.
Oh, really?
Why did you hear that?
I thought you said, is there anything else before we adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I said, let's adjourn.
Thank you.
In turn, let's go.
Eight thirty, awesome.
Yeah, we made money tonight.
So, Lon, we'll kind of find on Sunday afternoon, I could.